To the Eureka City Council meeting, November 21st. We're glad you're all here and look forward to hearing from you. We're going to start this meeting with the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jero Gigi. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And with that, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Castellano.
Here.
Councilmember Moulton.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez is absent. Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Here.
Mayor Burgal.
Here. And would all who care to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
We had no closed session this evening, but we did have a special meeting. Thanks, everybody that came to that and with your input. And next, we will have our mayor's announcement. Our first proclamation tonight is Law Enforcement Records and Professional Staff Day. And Councilmember Moulton has that one.
Thank you, Mayor. It'd be my pleasure. Law enforcement records and professional staff day. I'd like to... Who's here to receive this proclamation?
Sorry.
Ah, the chief. One of our chiefs.
One of your chiefs?
Well, sorry. There's only one chief. Where... It's a serious thing, Mayor. City of Eureka proclamation and recognition of Law Enforcement Records and Professional Staff Day, November 21st, 2023. Whereas law enforcement agencies throughout the state depend on law enforcement records and professional staff personnel to provide them with these vital services, and whereas information is the lifeblood of any organization and accurate law enforcement records must be created, collected, processed, maintained, disseminated, and disposed of in accordance with local, state, and federal laws, and whereas citizens have an expectation, law enforcement records are maintained with accuracy and integrity, overseen by staff dedicated to continual professional development and the highest standards of operational efficiency, and whereas enforcement records and professional staff personnel are crucial to helping law enforcement agencies identify, pursue, capture, and process suspected law violators, and whereas these professionals continually use their expertise and experience to assist in serving the public, maintaining criminal statistics, and assisting patrol and investigators track felons and improve apprehension strategies, and whereas it is important to recognize California's law enforcement records and support personnel for their valuable contributions to our law enforcement system, and whereas the Eureka Police Department Records Section is responsible for the integrity of law enforcement records for prosecutors, allied agencies, and citizens, tracking missing and wanted persons, accounting for recovered stolen vehicles, firearms and property, live scan and fingerprint services, call-taking parking enforcement responsibilities, creation and verification of statistical reports for the Department of Justice and Federal Bureau of Investigations, and a host of behind-the-scenes duties in support of the department and city goals. Now, therefore, I, Katie Moulton, on behalf of Mayor Kim Burgal and the Eureka City Council, do hereby recognize and express support for the Eureka Police Department Records Section and Professional Staff Personnel for their invaluable service to the department and the city, and proclaim November 21st, 2023, as Law Enforcement Records and Professional Staff Day in Eureka, California.
Thank you.
Did you want to say anything, Chief?
I'm not quite sure I could say any more than that.
Okay.
But thank you very much, and thank you for honoring these very dedicated employees.
Thank you.
And I knew they did a lot, but I had a little...
That's a lot, yeah.
So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Okay, just a few things from my mayor's reports. I just wanted to let you know that I got to go to Eric Hollenbeck's feature about the boat, the boat that won the war, The Craftsman. And I'm going to tell you, if you don't, if you haven't seen that, or if you get the opportunity, it's well worth a watch. It's so fun to watch his show, The Craftsman, and just to see all our local friends on TV as he drives around and all of those things. But this particular boat was really, in listening to him, it was really a wonderful, wonderful story about healing, really, for him and for a lot of the veterans that he works with. And I don't know how many of you know Eric Hollenbeck, but he is an incredible human that dedicates a lot of his time to working with at-risk youth and veterans. And he does fabulous work with them, and I really, I just appreciate him. I use him as a story, actually, in my classroom, so that, you know, kids can realize the resiliency of people. So, anyway, that was a real gift, and I felt really honored to be there. Just to note that December 2nd, so not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, will be our fourth Community Town Hall, and we will be talking about Substance Use Disorder: The Longest Pandemic. And I think that that title is really apropos when you think about, you know, just addiction in general, and then now this, this business of the whole opioid crisis and how so many people are getting more addicted without even, you know, that you wouldn't think would be getting addicted. Anyway, we have these great speakers. We have, who do we have? We have a lot of great speakers. We have Dr. Vee from the Veterans, Ruby Byan from Waterfront, Greg Allen, Chief of Police in Ria Del, Vesta, I can't think of her last name right now, but it's on my Facebook page, so we'd love to see you there. This town hall, we're going to do earlier because of the change in the day, or, you know, the light, so we'll be doing this one from 10:30 to 1:30. The doors will open at 10:00, so there will be no tacos, but there will be food to nibble on. Next, just to remind people that Thursday is Thanksgiving, you know that, but it is also the day of the Turkey Trot in Old Town. And if you've never done the Turkey Trot, it's a 5K, you can walk, you can run. It's just a great event to start your day and just to, like, get energized and to see all your friends from the city and all around, so it's always fun. If you're there, say hi, because I'll be there. And then, let's see. Oh, and then, I just want to remind people, so I've been spending a lot of time in Old Town, and I'm going to head up to Henderson Center next week, but, you know, it's really important that we all shop local. There's been a lot of, our local businesses have really been hit, you know, with COVID and just trying to recover. And so, there's far more, I think we get a lot more out of shopping local than just shopping local. You know, we're supporting each other, we're getting to know each other. What a gift that is to building community. So, I'm hopeful that this year, that people really focus a lot on shopping local. And Old Town is, I think it's Saturday, they're going to have their day, and I know that there's some most excellent sales going on, because I was just down there today, so. And then, lastly, this is the last thing, I promise, but this is something I'm really excited about, is tomorrow, I get to go out with the police department and go on a ride-along, and I haven't done that since the summer, and I need to schedule with the fire department, too. You know, you don't really realize the incredible work, I mean, you might, but you really don't realize the incredible work that our first responders, EPD, and the fire department do all the time. And so, going out for me, it just gives me an opportunity to really appreciate them, first of all, and be blown away by everything they do, but also to really see what's happening in the community from a different lens. So, I'm really looking forward to going out with Officer Huffman tomorrow, so that'll be great. And now, we will move on to the public comment period. So, thanks, everybody, for listening. And if you run, see you Thursday. So, public comment is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take an action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. So, do we have anybody here for public comment? Hi, welcome.
I continue to hear that the situation going on in Palestine is complicated, but when you are a descendant of survivors who made it out alive from a genocide, you learn to know the patterns of colonization early on in life. So, no, it is not complicated. Let's call it what it is, colonization, a genocide of indigenous Palestinians, a beast that will never satisfy its hunger. So, we must stand up against it and say enough is enough. As a community member, I see the daily struggles here on the daily basis. There are people here without homes, there are people here without food to eat, without clean clothes to wear, proper education, and without healthcare. This list goes on. And instead of our money going towards funding an oppression, it should be used to liberate us all. That is why I urge you to listen to the voices of the people telling you to add the resolution that Humboldt for Palestine has created onto the agenda for next meeting, because a ceasefire is the bare minimum. In order for the Palestinians and all oppressed groups to truly be liberated, we must break the cycles of colonialism. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
My comments are going to seem kind of pedestrian after that, but it's a local concern. My name is Scott Willetts. I've owned the home at 1234 Myrtle Avenue since 2011, and I'm commenting on a topic that is actually scheduled for your December 19th meeting, but I feel it's important to address it now. I'm adamantly opposed to the plan to ban all parking on Myrtle Avenue. I don't have time in my allotted three minutes to go into great detail about specifically how my family and all of my neighbors will be impacted, but those impacts have already been documented in writing, and I will be documenting them more fully as we go forward. But I do have grave concerns about this process so far, and that's the reason I'm speaking to you now. I'll try to hit just a few key points. First, a preliminary parking survey conducted by the city prior to presenting this proposal was evidently based on a small handful of data points that were collected by counting cars at 6:00 AM and 7:00 PM for less than a week. That study did not remotely reflect the actual parking use patterns that I witnessed on a daily basis as a resident of that neighborhood. Second, and hopefully this has already been remedied by a second round of letters that just went out, but only residents along the south side of Myrtle Avenue, living in properties directly adjacent to the curb where the current proposal is going to go into effect, were notified by a letter prior to last week's meeting of the Transportation Safety Committee or Commission when it was on their agenda. Consequently, I've got dozens of neighbors who are highly dependent on street parking, who knew nothing of this plan and had no opportunity to voice their opinions about it during that meeting. Of those who were notified in time, I and several others appeared at that meeting and voiced our objections. Staff read several emails from other residents who sent messages voicing their objections, and I know for a fact that there were others who called and left voice messages, though they weren't mentioned during the meeting, so their opinions were not represented to the commission. Other than city staff, not one single stakeholder who would be impacted by this proposal spoke in favor of it. Nobody. And yet, astonishingly, the commission voted to advance the proposal to the city council only with some vague directive to include, and I quote, "a staff report about how the loss of parking would affect residents and what opportunities are available to mitigate the loss of parking." During that meeting, the only mitigations discussed amounted to basically, "Well, you can always park at the CVS and then lug all your valuables home in the rain, in the dark, however many blocks it takes to get home." That's unacceptable, and that should be obvious. More concerning is I reviewed the official minutes of the meeting, and there was only the briefest mention that the public comments even happened, and nobody reading those minutes would have any idea that 100% of the comments were even about the parking ban, much less that they were 100% opposed. And so, I'm asking, in light of these issues, that the city council remove that agenda item from the December 19th.
Thank you. Your three minutes are up.
And let the Transportation Commission do a better job.
Thank you. Thank you. Hello.
My comment is in regard to the Eureka Housing For All Ballot Initiative. In the last two council meetings, several public commentators suggested that this ballot initiative should go to a vote in March. The public and the council were repeatedly told by city staff that the council cannot have this go to vote in March and that this needed to be during the November elections. After checking with the registrar, Juan Cervantes, he emailed this, and I quote, "Election Code 9222 does indeed provide a legislative body like the Eureka City Council with the discretion to call for a special election to vote on a proposition." He additionally stated that the Election Code 1405 says, "If the governing body calls a special election pursuant to the subdivision, the election shall be held not less than 88 days nor more than 103 days after the order of the election." This means that our council was provided incorrect information and that there is time to get this on the ballot for March, provided this is ordered by the council before December 8th, I believe. Our elected and appointed officials should help our community to know what this Eureka Housing For All Ballot Initiative is truly about. Instead, we have council members who call it an anti-housing initiative, and some of them, along with our local media, try to spin this into some big, bad billionaire scenario, and that's simply not the case. Over 50 businesses in Eureka, most of which are small businesses that are trying to survive in our current economy, are the backbone of this initiative. Additionally, this petition garnered enough signatures from the people in our community to be put to a vote by the people of Eureka. The job of our council should be to represent the citizens of the community, not to make decisions based off of personal opinions and agendas. The negative backlash from the council and the city staff from our community exercising our democratic rights to give our community a chance to vote through a petition is concerning. And then, for the city to deliver a report based off of flawed data and assumptions. The initiative does not prevent the building of affordable housing on downtown parking lots. Building on a top of a parking garage is not a new thing and is done throughout the state of California. We should be creative and work together on this. There are solutions that could benefit all of us. The initiative does not prohibit construction on the city-owned lots and does not make any changes to the arena numbers, it just seeks to preserve parking, which we will need more of, especially when there are all these new housing units. And I thought it was an interesting point a public commenter made in the last council meeting, mentioning how the city decided to keep existing ground-level parking for the city of Eureka employees on their parking lot of Sixth and Al at City Hall. If our city officials want to help local businesses to thrive while working toward having less cars on the road and more housing, a great place to start would be with yourselves. If the council chooses to have this wait for nearly a year until next November for this to go to vote, please stop saying the Citizens for a Better Eureka are holding this up. You, council, have the ability to push this forward to a vote at any time, March included. It costs about $5,500 to do this, and considering the amount of money that's being held up, it's a drop in the bucket. Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. So, friends, if we could not clap our hands in the meeting as a decorum thing, it makes people uncomfortable, but you can always do this. Okay? Thank you for being respectful. Appreciate it. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Hello, council members. My name is Jahan Hayden, and I am third-generation Humboldt on one side and first-generation American on the other. I'm here tonight to encourage the Eureka City Council to join the ranks of cities across the country, including Richmond, California, Providence, Rhode Island, and most recently, yesterday, Atlanta, Georgia, in supporting a meaningful ceasefire initiative that brings about a just peace by way of the liberation of Palestinian people, such as the proposed initiative provided by email from Humboldt for Palestine. Let me explain what I mean by a just peace. We hear many calls for peace. We hear them when we, when we speak of Palestine, the Ukraine, the Sudan, the Congo, and during every uprising of oppressed people in the United States. But what cries for peace fail to address is the underlying issues that created the tensions in the first place. A cry for peace without a cry for justice is a request by the oppressor for the oppressed to fall in line and remain content with the status quo. How can we dare ask Palestinians to return to the status quo after what we have all seen unfolding in front of our eyes every day? If we rewind the clock beyond October 7th, UN data will show that from 2008 to 2020, the total death toll in Israeli-Palestinian conflicts were 251 Israeli deaths, which averages to approximately 21 people per year, versus a staggering 5,590 deaths of Palestinians, which averages to an approximate 466 people per year. For comparison, more transgender folks have been killed in the US so far this year, 33, and more students have died in school shootings in the US so far this year, 36, than Israelis were killed by Hamas attacks annually prior to October 7th. Now, ask yourself, does this aggression seem measured or just? Is it truly about ensuring the safety of Israel? When will we hold accountable for their, Israel accountable for their ongoing apartheid state and genocide of the Palestinian people? When will we hold our own federal government accountable for the supporting role we have played? When will we demand the funds to take care of our destitute at home that we see on the streets every day instead of allowing our tax dollars to be used for mass murder? There is no lasting peace without a just peace. There never has been, and there never will be. Dr. Martin Luther King, who was martyred in the ongoing fight for black liberation in this country, perhaps said it best, "True peace is not merely the absence of tension, it is the presence of justice." Palestinians and Israelis deserve justice and peace. I encourage you to do your part to give it to them. The rest of the world is watching America's every move, and you have an opportunity to stand on the right side of history and truly represent the people of this city by demanding a ceasefire and a just peace by way of Palestinian liberation.
Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate you being here. Thank you. Hello, welcome.
How's it going? Good. Hi, my name is Roy Gomez. I've been a business owner in the city of Eureka over 20 years, commercial property owner, employed hundreds of people here in the city of Eureka. And I am also here to ask the council to move the Housing For All Initiative to March 5th. You guys have said that, or you've been advised that you cannot do that, and it's pretty apparent now and obvious, after interpreting the different election codes, that that is a possibility. And I think it's a real injustice to this community if you keep this divisive issue going on for a whole year. Whatever side of the argument you're on, I think it's important that the people now vote on this issue and decide what's going to happen, you know? Holding up funds and claiming that one side is holding up funds when you have the power to move this vote to a sooner day? I would definitely highly recommend that. I'm also here to announce another company that we've established in the city of Eureka, and I'd like to, I'd like to read the mission statement to you. The name of the company is Citizens Reinforcing Democratic Values, CRDV for short. CRDV aims to reinforce and uphold the core democratic values that have been systematically denigrated and circumvented by some of our local and state representatives. Through education and recognition that these core democratic values are under attack on every level of government, we strive to find solutions with like-minded business owners, parents, educators, community members, and existing and inspiring politicians. Our community engagement transcends above and across all political affiliations. We will create a coalition and staff that will watch, examine, expose, and take action when needed against any elected and appointed official who unethically utilize their positions to help implement an undemocratic agenda using the very same democratic institutions and freedoms that their agenda aims to dismantle. Our grassroots nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization will act locally and think globally to ensure that we meet these challenges from the ground up. Our main focus will be to reinforce and educate the following core democratic values: capitalism, ethics, accountability and transparency, free market economy, and the family unit. With that, we join you as nonprofit capitalists and grant gold diggers with this new entity. And we have a live website now. Please check it out. Join our cause, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. Welcome.
Oh, it started, okay. Hi, my name is Clarissa Villalobos, and I am a Eureka community member and here to urge the city council to support the discussion of the liberation of Palestine, including a permanent ceasefire be added to the December 5th agenda. This is my first time addressing the city council, so to familiarize myself with the process of public comment, I went to your website, eurekaCalifornia.gov. At the bottom of the page is a land acknowledgement. The last sentence says, "This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism." As a Master of Social Work student at Cal Poly Humboldt, an intensive site grad of UC Santa Cruz, I have studied the term settler colonialism for the past decade. But as a Latina and Indigenous descendant, these terms are encoded into my DNA. I hope I am telling you what you already know, but it's worth repeating, that Indigenous Palestinians' land was stolen from them by the US and UK backing of a theocratic ethnic state and a legal settler colonial project known as Israel. Israel is the textbook definition of settler colonialism. They don't even attempt to hide it from the world, partly because their violence is both abetted and backed by one of the largest global superpowers, the United States of America, but also because we have all become so comfortable issuing land acknowledgements, such as the one on your website, without taking into account what these words actually mean. So, to summarize, I want you to be bold and step up to meet the humanitarian crisis at hand, which is not an isolated one occurring in a vacuum, but a recent intensification of a 100-plus-year-long genocide and settler colonial occupation of Palestine. As citizens of the US empire backing this genocide, we all have a moral obligation to speak up in whatever capacity available. Will you choose your humanity or complicity in the disappearance of another Indigenous population? Thank you.
Thank you. So, do we have anyone else in chambers that came to speak? Seeing none, we'll bring it over to Zoom. I can't read it.
Honorable Eureka City Council members, my name is Carly. I'm a Eureka community member, a staff member, and student at Cal Poly Humboldt, and I come before you again in support of Palestinian liberation and an immediate ceasefire. As a member of Humboldt for Palestine, I'm honored to be a co-author, along with other members of our community, of the Resolution for the Liberation of Palestine, which was sent to you on Thursday, November 16th. I'm here to ask for your action in the adoption of an agenda item for the December 5th council meeting in order to discuss the Resolution for the Liberation of Palestine. I came before you on November 7th, when I implored you to support a ceasefire and the liberation of Palestine, in consideration of how all of our collective liberation is intertwined. I specifically referenced Eureka's own acknowledgement of occupation of the Wiat land of Jero Gigi and required action in order for this acknowledgement to be anything more than performative. In our now extensive negotiations and conversations with elected officials, there seems to be a sense of hopelessness and futility. What can we possibly do in our local community to have an impact on the global imperial machine, particularly in the current ethnic cleansing campaign being carried out by Israel on Palestinians? Eureka has stood up in the past against settler colonialism, taking action to make your acknowledgement of occupation less empty. I refer specifically to the return of Tullawatt to the Wiat tribe in 2019. This was made possible by years of activism from Wiat tribal peoples, the open-minded wisdom to listen and take action by the Eureka City Council, and many historical acts of bravery. I think of Bret Hart, who wrote the article, quote, "Indiscriminate massacre of Indians, women, and children butchered," end quote, in 1860. This article resulted in the excommunication of Hart from the community, including threats to his life. However, this element of the archival record became a critical piece in establishing an accurate historical narrative and was key in the return of Tullawatt to the Wiat tribe in the 21st century. We must establish a record of resistance. Even here in this community, in the belly of the beast, the record will support seven generations of our future, who will look back at the atrocities of more than 14,000 Palestinians genocided, including over 5,500 children since October 7th, and ask, whose voice rose in outcry? What was done to stop it? Whose voices and stories are included in this history? Our collective liberation is intertwined. Your silence makes you complicit in this genocide. Your voice has the power to turn the tide. To mirror my comrade Jahan, there is no lasting peace without a just peace. I ask for your action in the adoption of an agenda item for the December 5th council meeting in order to discuss the Resolution for the Liberation of Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you, Carly. And looks like it's Ash.
Mm-hmm. Ash.
Hello. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, Ash Teeter here, lostcoastpopulist.com. Want to say with all the mention of colonialism and its damaging effect on Indigenous and other communities, that if the city's gonna partake in any kind of draft of a resolution, maybe it should be against the global entities. I mean, seeking, you know, total control with all the digital stuff. You know, gotta get your electric car that could be turned off at any given moment. Gotta have all the voting done digitally, so they can take months to be recounted and fixed. If you look at Argentina, they just had a hand-count election, and they got it done overnight. Yet, in Reading, where they wanted to do that, our good governor Newsom stepped in and said, "That's a big no-no because it takes too long." But, I mean, we already take, what, like, three extra weeks to fix the vote as it is? But yeah, I'd just say, if there's gonna be a resolution against, something that, you know, that Native tribes have said is, "Look ahead, seven generations." What is it gonna look like, seven generations into the new normal, where everybody's trapped in a little box, everything's digitally surveilled? I mean, what's that gonna look like for our, you know, our children? For Indigenous people's children? And the bankers pushing this whole thing, along with all the COVID nonsense that went on, they're the ones that are the modern-day colonialists trying to control everything. So that's what people need to, you know, wrap their heads around if we're gonna draft a resolution about anything. And for anyone who thinks that if you're just, you know, going along with this agenda, it's gonna lead to some kind of democratic socialist, you know, utopia, I mean, just really, really think about what they're pushing for. I mean, you will own nothing and be happy. That's what Klaus Schwab says. Bill Gates, big funder of the International Monetary Fund and the WEF. He's been banned in multiple countries for pushing his genetically engineered crops that have decimated villages. Those are the kind of people that are being aligned with, if you're working towards this Democrat socialist utopia, with digital control of everything. That's what it should be working against, I think. If you're gonna draft a resolution against, you know, colonialists trying to take over things, those are the modern-day ones that we should be all joining forces against. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Ash. Is that Jamila?
Jamila?
Hi. I'm here to speak in support of the Eureka City Council to add a ceasefire in Palestine and the liberation of Palestine resolution onto the agenda and to pass it. My name is Jamila. I'm a Eureka community member, social work student at Cal Poly Humboldt, heartbroken Palestinian-American and descendant of my family and ancestors of Gaza. There's so much that I want to say about this, but I would like to establish the history of how critical the liberation of Palestine is and how much we have a responsibility to speak out against and end this genocide of Palestinians. So I'd like to talk about HR 2590. In April of 2015, HR 2590, the Defending the Human Rights of Palestinian Children and Families Living Under Israeli Military Occupation Act, was introduced by Representative Betty McCollum. It seeks to ensure that no US taxpayer funds are used by the Israeli government for the military detention of Palestinian children, demolition of Palestinian homes and property, or to further annex Palestinian land in violation of international law. Israel receives an unconditional $3.8 billion in aid from the US annually. Also worth noting is that the Israeli military detains around 500 to 700 Palestinian children every year. Israeli forces arrest children from their homes in the middle of the night, at demonstrations, and near military installations. Approximately three out of four children experience physical violence and typically arrive at the interrogation bound, blindfolded, frightened, sleep deprived, and without the presence of a parent or guardian or lawyer. These children are prosecuted in military courts that deny fundamental due process rights and violate international standards for independence and impartiality. This systematic and institutional violence is well documented by the US State Department, Human Rights Watch, UNICEF, and many others. Palestinian children have the right to a safe and just future. We believe the United States government must use all available means to pressure Israeli authorities to end the detention and abuse of Palestinian children. How much of this annual $3.8 billion in military funding do the people of Eureka pay through federal tax dollars? What community needs could be funded instead? In Eureka, $395,425 to Israel's weapons could instead fund 47 households with public housing for a year, 137 children receiving free or low-cost healthcare, four elementary school teachers, 1,125 households with solar electricity produced for a year, 10 students with their loan debt canceled. The Israeli military uses your tax dollars, our tax dollars, to kill Palestinian people, arrest and torture Palestinian children, destroy their homes, and steal their native land in violation of US and international laws. Adding a resolution to the liberation of Palestine to the agenda item is critical, not only because it's the right thing to do, but because this international issue is a local issue. So many issues brought to council each week are-
Thank you, Jamila. Your three minutes are up. We appreciate your comments. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Ellen P.
Hello. Yes, I am a homeowner and resident of Eureka, and I also support a discussion of the liberation of Palestine, including a permanent ceasefire being added to the city council agenda for December 5th. I support the resolution for the liberation of Palestine, which was submitted to council members by email. As a Eureka community member and resident, this issue matters to me because we have Palestinian-Americans in our community who have lost or are worried about their family members in Gaza. I'm also a parent, and I'm teaching my child by example that it is our responsibility to speak up when we see injustice. The local community should care about and invest in injustice and liberation for Palestine because none of us are free until all of us are free. If we cannot all agree and say out loud that genocide and apartheid are wrong, then this is not a safe place, especially for our neighbors who are already marginalized. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Bree?
Hello. This is Briann Hutchinson, and I'm a part of the Humboldt Psychedelic Society and the Decriminalize Nature movement. And I just wanted to express gratitude for the council members for passing our resolution into effect. And I wanted to announce that on Friday, December 1st, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Labor Temple, we will be hosting a free event, an educational event, to celebrate the city of Eureka becoming the 25th city across the nation to decriminalize amphibians and psychedelic plant medicines. People can find out more through our website, decriminalizernaturehumboldt, and then also at Humboldt Psychedelic Society. I also wanted to hop on this evening and vocalize my support for the ceasefire resolution presented to you by Humboldt for Palestine. I think that, as one of the speakers earlier had mentioned, that if we're going to do the work, really do the work of decolonizing our communities and our minds and our hearts in this local community, that we should really be taking seriously the decisions of our national government in the genocide that is occurring in Palestine and Gaza at this time. I think this is an immediate discussion that needs to happen, and I'd like to see it on the agenda and hopefully passed by the Eureka City Council. Yeah, I think that as citizens, many of us feel unheard by our national government. We feel a bit lost, and like, our voices are silenced. And I think by reaching out to local governments, to reaching out to local city councils, we are dismantling a very oppressed and corrupt system that doesn't really listen to people. So really, this is our last chance. And I think in the same way that we are moving the Decriminalize Nature movement to go across the country, it's obviously two different, you know, subjects and categories, but I just want to make a plug for why local government really matters on several of these issues. And most importantly, on the issue of settler colonization, on the issue of oppression, on the issue of people in our communities really hurting by what's happening in the global sphere. We're interconnected, the local and the global. So please put this resolution on the agenda. Also, the resolution for the housing issue in Eureka as well, you know, waiting until March, that seems like past winter, and that seems just cruel. So I will step down now from the mic, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bree.
Luna?
Hi, I'm Luna. I am a Eureka resident. I grew up in this area, and I've lived here my whole life. And I just wanted to echo some of the things that earlier speakers have said, supporting the inclusion of the ceasefire and support for Palestinian liberation resolution in the next meeting agenda. I would also like to speak to one of the concerns that I have heard from city council members on this council and in the Arcata City Council in the past, which is the concern that this is an international issue that is not connected to our local community and our interests in our local community. I firmly believe that this is directly relevant to Eureka. I think that, as earlier speakers have said, obviously, the Eureka City Council has made claims to be dedicated to decolonization and have made strides in terms of giving land back to the Wiyat tribe, which is an amazing thing. And earlier speakers have also elaborated on how that relates directly to the use of our government's tax dollars in maintaining the theft and destruction of Indigenous people's lands in Palestine. Another issue that I think also links this genocide to the interests of our local community is housing. There have been many meetings in the past that I have attended at the Eureka City Council, at the Eureka City Council, that have been dedicated to the issue of finding solutions for housing for homeless people and low-income families. And I think that it's important to recognize that as of today, 45% of all housing has been destroyed in Palestine by the Israeli military. And based off of the current trajectory, if the rate of destruction continues at the current rate, in the next 32 days, there will be zero homes left in Gaza. And so I think it's really crucial to understand that while we are currently trying to use our city funds, our governmental funds to find solutions for people with no housing in our local community, our tax dollars are-
Thank you, Luna. Your three minutes are up. We appreciate you being here. Do you see anybody else?
I see no one else on Zoom.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close the public comment. And we will have a presentation, our public hearing, Metropole Siding and Window Rehabilitation, Historic Preservation Review Appeal. That's a lot of words. And we're gonna have Melissa come up. And then that presentation. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Derek. Okay, hello, Mayor Bregel and council members, Assistant Planner Smith. Tonight's public hearing is regarding an appeal of the Historic Preservation Commission's action on the Metropole Building's siding and window rehabilitation project at 306 Second Street. Here is a bird's eye view of the project site, showing the project is located in the northern portion of the city in Old Town. Zooming in closer yet, you can see that the site is located on the southeast corner of D Street and Second Street, north of Third Street, and west of E Street. The Metropole Building has three street-facing facades. Shown here in a Google Street View facing east is the D Street facade, or west-facing facade. The Metropole Building also fronts Second Street. Seen here in a Google Street View from the corner of Second and D Street facing southeast is the Second Street facade, or north-facing facade. Seen here in a recent photograph taken by staff in August of this year from D Street facing northwest is the alley-facing facade, or south-facing facade. All of the proposed alterations will occur along the less prominent alley-facing building facade. The applicant proposes to replace the existing rotted and deteriorated siding, window trim, window sills, and window sashes along the entire alley-facing building facade with different materials matching the existing as close as possible in configuration, design, texture, color, and material appearance. The staff report discusses different parts of the window which will be replaced, so I just want to give a brief overview of what those parts are. First is trim, or the border that goes around the outside of the window. This is sometimes called the window frame. Next is the sill, or the lip at the bottom edge of the window, which typically extends out from the wall further than the trim. Then is the window sash, which is the part of the window that surrounds the glass pane and holds the glass in place in the window frame. And last is the pane, or the actual sheet of glass that makes up a window. The existing windows on the Metropole Building shown here are a single-pane window, meaning only one pane of glass thick, that are single-hung, meaning only the bottom sash moves up and down. As outlined in the staff report and subsequent attachments, the applicant is proposing to replace the existing deteriorated redwood window sashes with Milgard brand Tuscany series single-hung vinyl window sashes encasing double-pane glass in the same exact dimensions as the existing windows, which will be painted to match the existing building color. At the November 1st, 2023 Historic Preservation Commission meeting, the Historic Preservation Commission approved the replacement of the existing redwood siding with Hardy brand siding in the closest profile to the original as possible. The Historic Preservation Commission approved the existing redwood window trim and sills, replacing the existing redwood window trim and sills with new trim and sills comprised of the best wood possible, more than likely cedar, in the same configuration and design as the original. The Historic Preservation Commission did not approve the replacement of the window sashes and imposed the condition that the existing window sashes must be repaired rather than replaced. The applicant appealed the decision within the subsequent 10-day appeal period, taking issue with the commission's condition E and continuing to request that the city approve replacement with the vinyl Milgard windows. The applicant has expressed, and this is echoed by the quotes seen in the attachments to the agenda summary, "Due to the concurrent financial state of the applicant, the substantial cost difference between the proposed materials and the like-for-like materials, and the reluctance of contractors to take the job, like-for-like repairs are not possible, and the replacement Milgard brand windows are the only feasible option, and the applicant feels due diligence has been done in exploring the alternate options." The city council may affirm, reverse, or modify the commission's decision on appeal, including removing, changing, or adding conditions of approval. Staff's recommendation to council is to sustain the Historic Preservation Commission's decision, but remove condition E, requiring the window sashes be repaired, and replace with the condition that any wooden window sashes removed from the south-facing facade, which are able to be repaired, will be stored, repaired over time, and retained for future window replacement on other- window replacement on other building facades. With the modification of the siding material, the due diligence exhibited by the applicant to explore alternate options suggested by the Historic Preservation Commission, the findings presented in the staff report, and the existing and added conditions, staff finds that replacement of windows and siding with different materials is appropriate in accordance with the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, and the staff recommendation made by the Historic, and the recommendations made by the Historic Preservation Commission. Staff recommends council hold the public hearing and adopt a resolution to modify the Historic Preservation Commission's conditions of approval to allow replacement of windows on the south-facing facade of the Metropole Building located at 306 Second Street, also known as 217 D Street. I do have a suggested motion on the next slide, but I will stop screen sharing to allow for the public hearing. Staff, as well as the applicant, Dave Gaddis, and the property owner, Evo Fanucci, are available for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council? Councilmember Castellano?
Hi. Thank you. Thanks for the report. And it's really nice to have you here, Mr. Fanucci. Thanks for being here. I was curious, the other windows on the building are in fine condition. Do they need repair?
Excuse me, sorry. My name's Dave Gaddis. I've been overseeing Evo's properties for twenty-six years. We have ninety-three windows in the building. What you see from the street, also there are three air wells in the inside of the building. There's twenty-four apartments, three commercial units. I'm the only one that takes care of the building. I've managed to go ahead and keep up with most of it. Unfortunately, that side wall gets the brunt of the weather, and the windows are rather high up, so I can't, I don't feel comfortable anymore climbing up thirty feet. So we'd have to rent a lift, two hundred dollars a day, this type of thing. And it's not a quick and easy project. The only other way to do it is to go ahead and pull the windows from the inside, board up the window, which basically is, you know, cutting off my tenant, our tenant in that unit, their being able to go ahead and see outside and also have air ventilation. But yeah, the rest of the windows I've managed to go ahead and keep fairly well-maintained. Our intent was to take these ten windows, take them over to his other property across the street, and over a period of time, go ahead and try to repair them. I've even spoken to Eric Collinbeck at Blue Ox, and he said he would be willing to go ahead and offer, you know, some guidance. He said that the chances of getting old-growth redwood, he couldn't guarantee. These days, it's basically when it's available. He said, you know, some years there's some, some years there's not. But that's currently where we stand at this moment. And just as a side note, sorry, the reason why we initially did this was because of the fact we planned on just scraping and doing a little sanding and painting the wall. It worked out to where when we started investigating a little further, we noticed that due to the last earthquake, there was some significant damage. We started removing some of the siding, and we noticed that the individual that Evo had contracted with in the seventies to go ahead and fix the building, had put fur on the inside, and that fur had rotted. So we started doing some repairs there. Unfortunately, Evo had had that individual go ahead and screw down the siding. So when we tried to remove it, quite often it was breaking, because it had ten layers of paint over the top of it, so we couldn't tell where the screws were. Then afterwards, we noticed there was numerous places insulation was missing. So we wanted to bring it to code. Well, we didn't know that we were under the historical code. He, at the time, when he purchased the building, he purchased it with a partner, which was Robert Imperial. Robert had agreed to it. He did not notify Evo, so we had no idea. Well, Imperial had went ahead and threw John Egan, his descendant, well, Renee's husband, when they were doing their side wall here about ten years ago, they went ahead and put these same windows in, the Tuscany series, Milgard. So we assumed that we could do the same. That's why we're at the state we are at now. And we would have had the wall done and the new windows in by now, but now there's winter. So now we're looking at until summer. Does that explain?
Sure, sure. I have a couple more questions.
Oh, sure.
Thank you so much. And the apartments that are rented, the apartments that are-
The apartments are rented, yes. We have the lowest rents in Eureka for our residents. In fact, during COVID, we did not raise any rents at all. There's a standard where we can only raise a certain percentage. Most of our units are low-income. We've tried to go ahead and keep up with things, but I mean, expenses have gone up. We've got an elevator in there. Otis is six hundred and twenty dollars an hour. Water's gone up, electric's gone up. We have no gas in the building. It's all electric. So we're just trying to maintain, and we're willing to go ahead and bring the wall up to code. I just, it doesn't seem feasible to go ahead and, you know, for ten windows to go ahead and pull a window, board it up, and have that tenant go, I don't know, two, three, four weeks while I'm trying to go ahead and repair it or rebuild it. And Eric said that he could go ahead and do so, and maybe not with the same wood, but it would cost thirty-five hundred dollars a window. We can't afford thirty-five thousand dollars for ten windows. We've already purchased the Milgard windows before we even found out we were historic.
Did you have one more question, Leslie?
I did.
I mean, Councilmember Castellano?
I'll let some other council members go.
Okay.
Councilmember Molten, and I see you guys.
Yes, sir.
Just a-
Yes.
You said there are some of the Milgard windows elsewhere. Where else were they?
They are on the Imperial Building. How can I describe this?
A different building.
The Imperial Building is on the same block. It's on the corner of Second and E Street. So it would be the opposite corner on the same block.
Okay, that's, I got it.
Same side of the alley, and that building is also on the local registry.
Thirty feet down, same alley.
Understood. I misunderstood. I thought you meant they were on a different side of this building.
No.
I got it now. Thank you.
Councilmember Contreras Deluge?
Are you able to toggle back to the slide that we had previously that showed the window?
I will, I will.
Okay.
The mouth of God back there. Okay.
How do I get it?
Derek, what do I do?
I'm sorry. I stumped you guys.
He said I don't need to share.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. You know what? I'm sorry that you're going through this process. Honestly, this seems absurd to me. So this seems like this should be a relatively simple thing. You know, obviously, this is, you know, they're serving low-income tenants, which we want. You know, didn't raise rents during the pandemic, which is thoughtful, and I appreciate it. This contributes nothing visually, and we're, you know, talking about replacing these so that we have nicer, safer windows that are going to be better for the tenants themselves.
Also more energy efficient.
Right. So my only issue with this is, I think we should go ahead and approve this and get this moving along for them and not keep them here any longer. But my only issue with this is, is a caveat that's in it that says that they need to retain them, and then when they replace future windows, they need to use those. I think, let's ask them to retain the windows, but asking them to do that later, then they're going to be confronted with that exact same problem where you're trying to find someone to restore windows and that kind of thing. They need to be able to replace the windows on this building as they go and keep it safe for their tenants.
Councilmember Castellano?
Sorry, I just have a few more questions.
Sure.
See, and so, and thanks for bringing the picture back up. Regardless of which type of windows are re, are installed or reinstalled, the trim and the sills would still need to be replaced with wood.
Of course.
Right, okay. Just wanted to confirm that. So there's going to be some major, you know, kind of work on the windows. And I saw one of your bids was about nineteen thousand dollars for wooden windows versus the nine thousand somethings. We're talking maybe a ten thousand dollar difference?
Well, first of all, we already have the Milgard windows because we didn't know we were historic. And as I said, Imperial had put them on their building, so we assumed that we could. And Evo does have them on Roy's building on the same sidewall, and he's had them there for twenty years, and he hasn't had any problems. The, I'm sorry, can I ask you a question again? I apologize.
Just, it's a ten, your lowest bid, it's a ten thousand dollar difference?
Right. The one for nineteen thousand dollars was going to be, to my understanding, was going to be second or third-growth cedar, which does not hold up in this environment. It'd be basically to where we'd put them on, and if I was not up there at least every two years, going ahead and repairing and maintaining these windows, which as I said, I have ninety-three, plus the twenty-four apartments, I mean, I'm one person, those windows would fail. So what we're trying to do is, the Milgard, our lifetime warranty for residential, their ten-year warranty for commercial. So I would know that for ten years, at least those ten windows, I don't have to worry about. That was our point.
Yeah, Leslie, if my memory is serving me right, I have to flip through a bunch of pages, but I think that nineteen thousand was one of the original quotes that we got from, or that the applicant got from Floyd Kuna with Kuna Creations. And there's two different price points on that quote, and it ranged from either restoration or replacement. And so I think that on the low end, again, if my memory is serving me correctly, the nineteen thousand was for a restoration figure. And that was, yeah, that was also in the same situation where they'd have to pull the windows out one by one.
Thank you. And then, and that actually is perfect, because it brings me to my next question in terms of, I'm sorry, I live in a place and have restored numerous, well, participated in restoring numerous old windows, so I'm very familiar with the process. Do you know how many can be restored?
I honestly, I'd say probably, well, it depends on what you mean by restored, okay? I could probably go ahead and, over a period of time, fix all of them using basically wood filler and Bondo, that type of thing, to go ahead and get them back, you know, to where I removed the damaged, rotted areas and got it back like that. To bring them back to original with old-growth redwood, I don't know. But I'd say probably six out of the ten I could go ahead and possibly save. But I've worked on numerous windows for twenty-six years. It's just, it takes time. And I hate for my tenants to go ahead and be to where, I mean, if I pull their window and board up their wall, and then there's other emergencies I need to take care of, I can't guarantee when I'll get back to that. So, and with the weather, you never know. So I don't want to put one in or take one out when it's pouring down rain.
Thank you.
And thanks for your comments. So are there any further questions? Great. So we are going to now open, so you can have a seat, please, yeah. And we're going to now open this public hearing for comments. Is anybody here to comment on this item? Ladies first.
Hi, my name's Julie Caldwell, and I own Humboldt Herbals, which is located in the building that we're speaking about. This particular project doesn't impact any of the windows in my business, but my business has been located, I've had my business for twenty-six years, and the majority of those years, it's been in this location. And I, you know, through this time, the tenants that live in the building have become my friends. I care about these people. Most of these people are elderly, they're low-income, and this is, I mean, I agree, this is just really kind of a no-brainer situation. We're talking about the alley side of the building. There's going to be no aesthetic change replacing these falling apart, truly, they're falling apart, windows, with a double-pane vinyl. These people deserve to have a double-pane vinyl window. And I think it's marvelous that we try to preserve as much of the historical quality that we can in our buildings in Old Town. It's what makes the charm of Old Town, you know, for sure. But this is going to have zero impact on the visuals of the Metropole Building, you know, and it's going to make a really, really big difference to the people who live in those apartments. So I just would say please remember that there's human consequences to what you decide with this window situation today. And yeah, thanks.
Thanks for being here, Julie. Is anybody up?
Hi, welcome.
Good evening, city council members and Mayor Burgele. I'm Chuck Petty, the current vice chair of the Historic Preservation Commission for the City of Eureka. The applicant was initially issued a stop-work order by the city when he started replacing the south-facing siding on the lower portion of the building without permit and using a completely different type of non-matching siding material. This application for siding, window trim, and window replacement then came before the Preservation Commission at our October meeting, as this building is listed on the Local Register of Historic Places. We asked the applicant to provide more information on siding and window replacement options and return to the November Preservation Commission meeting with that information. He did so, as has been reported. With the information, the Hardy Panel artisan line siding that matched the existing siding profile was no longer available, and that custom cedar would cost at least thirteen thousand dollars. Custom milled redwood would cost from between twenty-one and thirty-nine thousand, depending on the quality of the redwood. He also provided estimates from other local craftsmen for replacement windows that exactly matched the existing historic windows, the tune of, as we heard, nineteen hundred dollars each from Med River Construction for ten windows at nineteen thousand, or thirty-five hundred dollars each from Blue Ox Millworks for thirty-five thousand. The Preservation Commission took all that into account, and these high prices for exact replacement siding, and allowed the applicant, in our decision at the time, to replace the siding in a profile that almost matched the original, but for a much lower cost. We also allowed the applicant to replace the window sills and trim with the most cost-effective wood, as long as the dimensions of that trim matched the existing profile. The commission did not approve window replacement with the applicant's preferred option of vinyl windows, as they did not match the existing historic windows. The applicant had offered to retain the ten historic windows, as we've heard, restore them, keep them, to replace other windows on the building. Since the applicant was willing to keep and restore the existing windows anyway, we made it a requirement that he restore them and keep them in place, as his preferred vinyl window option, and this is where I will differ with staff, did not meet the Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Preservation and Rehabilitation. Vinyl is not an acceptable material for any window replacement by the Secretary of Interior Standards. And the building already has interior storms on all these windows, so energy saving was not the major concern, because there's already a storm window on the interior of this building. And the existing windows are not in really charitable shape. I went by today, and they all seem to be intact and functional. Several of them were up, and several of them were open and in use, so they do go up and down, they do work, they just need to be painted. Now, the applicant is requesting the city council overturn the decision of the Preservation Commission and allow vinyl windows. We were established in ninety-six to protect the exterior elements. The commission is composed of members who are experts in the field of preservation, real estate agents, building contractors, and owners of its properties. We know the standards and how to apply them. We made a fair and equitable decision in our case, and we ask the city council not reverse this decision unless they can make a clear and compelling case that a mistake was made by the Preservation Commission and their reasoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Price, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, distinguished council members, staff, ladies and gentlemen of the City of Eureka. I live at 217 D Street, apartment 310, in the third floor of the alley that you're speaking of. Yes, there are storm windows there, but let me tell you, when the wind blows hard in the wintertime, them storm windows move. Okay, so there's not energy efficiency already there, because they've been there for quite- Okay, so there's not energy efficiency already there because they've been there for quite some time. I move that you ask, or I ask that you move that we were able to use the vinyl windows, the double pane, as is. Thank you for your time, your consideration, and your respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I thought you were coming up, Phyllis. Thank you, ladies, for being here. Have a good night. Um, looks like Ash.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I wanted to say that. People might not know, but I was a residential house painter for many, many years. And just wanted to say that anytime you're working three stories up, it takes a very long time to get stuff done, like much longer than doing stuff at ground level. And, yeah, just want to support the, the property owner's, you know, right to get things done as affordably as possible and maintain the, the housing for his tenants that he's, he's providing. Just because I'm getting up there and trying to fix things on the third story every year, it does not sound fun, it does not sound, you know, feasible as, as there's an option out there that will let him keep it in a better, better, um, better shape for his tenants without getting up there every year to recaulk and reglaze and all the other stuff that goes along with maintaining double-hung historic windows. Thank you.
Thank you, Ash. And is that Gregory?
Yes, Greg Gare.
Hi, um, my name's Greg Gare. I am, um, a, uh, Eureka homeowner and, um, also, uh, the CEO of a corporation that owns one of the largest and most historic buildings in Old Town Eureka, the Carson Block Building. Um, I just wanted to let people know that I, I, I am very much in favor of maintaining the historic nature of Old Town and of our historic structures, but I am also incredibly sympathetic with Evo and with the efforts that he has put into to try and maintain a building that's also competing with and maintaining multiple objectives, including low-income housing, including maintaining the overall look and viability of our community. Um, I do not feel that anything he's proposed is going to detract from the historic nature of Old Town. And we, I, I am personally, and the people I work for are very much invested in maintaining the historical integrity and look and feel of Old Town. What he's doing is going to improve the look and feel, it's going to improve the lives of low-income residents, it's going to improve. I, I, I wish everyone would try to continue to maintain their properties that way. And there are many properties that, that are in need of great effort by the, by their, by their owners. Um, it's an expensive, expensive proposition, maintaining historic structures. We spent over eleven million dollars in hard costs and seventeen million total on the Carson Block Building. We will be paying for it way past my lifetime. Not every corporation can take advantage of tax credit financing and the variety of methods of financing necessary to do the kinds of things that you could and would like to do in an ideal situation with a historic structure. Um, I went to one of the two Historic Commission meetings where, um, the presentation was made, um, I believe it was the second one, and listened to very carefully what the commissioners had to say and what, and what the owners and the owners' representatives had to say. And I feel like they really gave a good faith effort to do as much as they could, given the economic constraints and the, the ability to try and do what they could with the building they own. And I just want to represent my view that I support the staff recommendation and I hope the City Council will continue to balance the historic nature of Old Town and the economic viability of the businesses that exist within it and approve the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Greg. Do you see anybody else?
I see no one else on Zoom.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for, um, a motion and a vote.
I'd like to make a motion.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Did you have a comment first, Katie?
Oh, did you have a comment first?
Or Councilmember Moulton?
Actually, I just had a question. If someone expl- could explain-
Councilmember Moulton.
Thank you. Uh, someone could explain to me, what does a storm window inside mean? What is that? Is there another window inside? How does that work? What does that look like?
Yes, inside, okay, there's the double-hung casement window on the outside. And then there's a space about like a couple, about four inches. And then there's the, uh, double-hung, um, storm window. Those were put in, oh, it, between seventy-six and seventy-eight.
Was it just another window?
Yeah.
I see.
Um, and I don't know, but I would imagine, um, seventy-six to seventy-eight standards probably don't meet standards today. Um, the windows that we proposed to put in have argon in them, they're energy efficient. I, I believe they're the best option.
Thank you. I just wanted to understand exactly what we were talking about already being in place. I have a comment that's appropriate.
That is appropriate. Let's, you know, let's get a motion on the table and then we'll have comments. Fair enough?
I will move-
Councilmember Deloche wanted to do that, so.
Our internet seems to be down. Um, so can I see, can you guys bring up what the motion is?
And then I'll bring it right back to you.
Okay, so my motion though is gonna change this slightly because I don't want them to have to roll back in here again in a year or two to have this conversation about other windows. So my motion is gonna be that I move the City Council adopt the resolution to modify the Historic Preservation's conditions of approval to allow replacement of the windows on the south-facing facade of the Metropole Building. But wherever that other line is about that they have to, then when they replace other windows on that same building, then they have to go through this process again. I don't want that. So what do I do? How do I make a motion that?
Un- unfortunately, I think that will be another process. Um, we couldn't wave the wand and say they're not gonna have to come back and go through this process again.
Okay, all right, well then I will, um, the south-facing facade of the-
Assistant Planner Smith has something to say.
I have, I have a question. Could the motion simply include, uh, verbiage that said, "with the removal of condition E" from the resolution?
Of course.
With the removal of resolution E from-
Of condition E from the resolution.
Of condition E from the resolution. Thank you, that's my motion.
You have a motion. Do we have a second? Um, Councilmember Moulton?
I think that, um, now, given some advance warning and having these historic windows at a different site with time to repair them, and if we're talking about replacing additional windows in the fu- future, we're talking about the street-facing facades. Uh, and that this, um, compromise was brought up by the building owners themselves, that I think, uh, asking them to remove the windows, keep them, repair them, and use them for later repairs, um, wouldn't put them back in this situation again. I think they have this warning. They know that, they, they know this is gonna happen now. Um, but also allowing them to use the windows that they have already purchased that are highly efficient on the back side of the building, uh, is reasonable. Also, I'd just like to, uh, suggest to all property owners that they look up their property and ask the city about all the regulations that might be on them 'cause, um, handshake agreements that are thirty, forty, sixty, eighty, a hundred years old, um, often don't necessarily cover all the bases. Uh, can I make a contrary motion? How do we do it?
Um, point of order. Uh, the first motion needed a second prior to discussion, so is the first motion can fail for lack of a second?
Yes, it did.
My apologies.
Thank you. And then now you may make a-
I would, uh, move the City Council adopt a resolution to modify the Historic Preservation Commission's conditions of approval to allow replacement of windows on the south-facing facade of the Metropole Building at three oh six Second Street, AKA two seventeen D Street. I have a quick question. We need a second.
We need a second.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion's been seconded. Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
My question is actually for them, whether or not that's accurate, that you, that this provides you with enough time now to restore those other windows going forward. That's my question.
So at this moment, the rest of the windows seem to be in decent condition. When I, if I take these windows out and I take them over across the street to Roy's, my intent is hopefully within the next year to go ahe- ahead and have all ten windows ready to go. I foresee that if another window has a problem, I can pull it, pop a new, pop one of these windows in that I have repaired, and it should be a quick and simple thing.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further comments? Councilmember Castellano.
Thank you. Um, let's see, I, I appreciate your plight. I, I do feel differently, you know, than, than the, the motion on the table. That being said, you know, I, I understand that, you know, the, the situation you're in. And, and I also see that, you know, you're, sorry, you have, you know, twenty-four units, each of those is bringing in income. You know, I do think that it would be possible to move forward with the more expensive option. You know, and, um, you know, I, it's not, the, I, I did want to, one of the reasons I want to talk to you is because there are programs, uh, nonprofit organizations that help teach people how to repair these windows and even, you know, people like West Side Community Center that are working to create transitional work opportunities for people to actually come in and do these repairs who have all been, uh, trained in this. So I want everyone out there to know that, um, if you have old wooden windows, there's most likely at least one nonprofit organization in the community that can come and do it, um, do the repairs for you. Uh, so just wanted to let, let folks know that.
Thank you. That's important information. So we still have a motion and a second? Any more further comments? Please vote. The suspense. Okay, so we'll have to do a roll call vote.
Okay. So- Councilmember Castellano?
No.
Councilmember Moulton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Aye.
Councilmember Fernandez is absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. And now, I lost track of where we were. I just put my, I put my thing somewhere. There it is. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Notice to the public that all matters listed under this category and considered to be, are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to City Council Resolution twenty-eleven dash two-two, if a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request should be made to a council member prior to the meeting unless a specific request has been made by a council member. The consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. And I haven't had anyone tell me that this item's been pulled, they want anything pulled, so. I'll take a motion.
Mayor, I move to, uh, approve the con- pass the consent calendar as written.
Second.
Please vote. On the roll call?
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Moulton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Aye.
Councilmember Fernandez is absent. Motion carries.
Wonderful. Uh, legislative action correspondence? Nothing. Great. Um, so we'll move on to future agenda items. Does anybody, Councilmember Castellano?
Um, I do have one, and this is something, um, let's see, it, you know, it comes up rather frequently when we're talking about parking, is that the city has made, um, you know, is making or has made some long-term plans regarding parking. And so I would like for us to put, uh, a future parking garage on the agenda in terms of developing ideas, just sharing with the public, like what those plans might look like, how we might pay for it, um, you know, where it could be located. So the public really has a sense of, uh, what our plans might be for the future in case parking becomes, um, uh, needed.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, City Manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this is actually along those lines. Um, I have a quick update on, um, the, a potential, um, parking garage. Um, so HCOG, um, is looking at a feasibility study for a parking garage. Um, we'll likely work with them and, and look at a location. Um, and then even better news is that there's potential funding, um, available for a local agency to go out and get this funding to build, um, the parking garage. And so, um, we will give as much information when we provide the report on the future parking garage and, um, we definitely will come up with some ideas to maybe even have ancillary funding if that, that funding shouldn't, uh, come to fruition. So, um, I was hoping that some of our, uh, community members were here to hear this news, but, um, we will get that out. Um, and I think it's great news. I think that the numbers that I've heard of is that, um, you know, we know that if you count eighth and G, sixth and L, sixth and M, fifth and D, and third and G and H where there is centers, it's two-hundred-and-nine parking spaces. And the funding that, um, that is potentially there would more than make up for those, those numbers. It would accommodate all of that and we could locate it directly in Old Town at one of our other locations, so. It's good news and, um, we'll be back to report more on that in the future, and that's all I have.
That's most excellent news. Thank you. Um, council reports. Councilmember Castellano.
Okay, um, let's see, I attended a, uh, they're not wearing my, wearing more of a community cent- community member hat, the Northern California Associates, Association for Nonprofits, uh, Planning Retreat. Um, I attended, uh, wearing my council member hat, uh, HWMA meeting, Eureka Main Street meeting. Um, and then I'm also involved with the Workforce Development Board, uh, and attended that meeting. And then, um, I also attended an event, um, of trans poets and artists as part of the Trans Week of Remembrance and just want to recognize, um, the people who spoke and the, the leadership in our community that make that, made that event happen. Oh, and I will be out of town next week for Cal Cities League Leaders Meeting where I'll be, uh, representing, uh, our community, along with another council member who I'm sure will talk about it too.
Thank you, and thanks for bringing up Trans Week. I meant to bring that up in my report, so appreciation. Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you very much. Um, I don't have any travel to report, but I did attend a Joint Powers Authority meeting with the, uh, Humboldt Bay Fire. We welcomed, was it three new firefighters on staff? Was it four? Four new firefighters on staff, four new, uh, first responders for our community, which is great. Um, I wanted to, I'm looking forward to, uh, in a month probably, the two-by-two with Eureka City Schools starting up, including their new leadership, uh, Mr. Gary Stortz. Congratulations to Superintendent Stortz, um, Superintendent-elect, almost, he's almost there. And I just want to remind folks that, uh, this Saturday is Shop Local Saturday, but of course you can shop local any day.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I attended the JPA meeting as well, which was great. Um, we had a county two-by-two, um, meeting too, was that last week, I think? And, um, I also will be attending the Cal Cities, uh, Board of Directors meeting, um, where represent, uh, the Redwood Empire Division. And we'll be discussing our legislative priorities for the year. So it's a, this is where we decide what we're gonna try and tackle. It'll be the same issues as always. It'll be housing. It'll be, um, the same issues that are always important. Um, so looking forward to that next week. Thanks.
Thank you. And Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, um, okay, so I attended the training for the Cold Weather Centers with Jacob Rosen and Commander LaFrance. That was really excellent, and we had a full crowd, so that was really cool. Um, I can't remember, did I already report on that? That happened since the last council- Um, I can't remember, did I already report on that? That happened since the last council meeting.
They have.
This has been a wild couple of weeks. Okay, and then I, um, I attended the county two-by-two. Um, uh, and, uh, met with quite a few community members. It's been a really active couple of weeks. Um, and then I met briefly, and it's totally escaping me the name of it, a nonprofit here that's working to recruit physicians and nurses into the area. Um, and then I also attended START, which is the Red Road Coast Intervention for Children in Crisis Ages Six and Older. Um, and, um, they had talked with me about joining their board, so I'm probably gonna be doing that. And so, yep, there's my report, guys.
Wonderful, and it's just two minutes after seven-thirty. Wow, this is a short meeting. Anyway, thank you guys for coming. We appreciate you being here. Happy Thanksgiving. We're out.